Hi. I shouldn't have talked so long. Hello, Dale.
Morning.
He's a realtor. He's loud. Well, yeah, that's because half the realtors that have sort of working in Bullhead. That's why the damn, the prices have gone up so quick. Jesus.
Are we ready?
Yeah. Well. Yes, wait until. Let's get this ball rolling.
Good morning. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I get a roll call?
Commissioner Alexander.
President.
Commissioner Abbott.
Here.
Commissioner Gillette.
Here.
Commissioner Jacks.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Morse.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Commissioner Walker.
Commissioner Gordon. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now, we're going to have an automated message. Hopefully, this.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Thank you. Under announcements, I'd like to take a moment today to reflect on what happened eighteen years ago today, not in our community, but to the world. It was a tragedy, a travesty, that the World Trade Center, along with two other sites, were attacked by a foreign company, country, and a foreign entity. I just, you know, we need to be more civil to each other and think about that for... So, would you join me for a moment of reflection in silence? Thank you. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and forward recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, October 7, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with exception of any continued items. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes for the August 14, 2019 meeting? So moved. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Jack and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have a call to the public now. There is one person signed up, Jamie Morgane. Oh, Jamie? Jimmy? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jem Morgane, Kingman resident, District One constituent. So, I'm here today in peaceful protest of Luana Gillette's presence on this commission, specifically because of her racist worldview, that we need to stop minorities, immigrants, from coming here to save this country from the browning of America. A worldview that is fueling domestic terrorism across the nation, such as the recent mass shooting in an El Paso Walmart. Today is the eighteenth anniversary of 9/11, an act of terrorism based on a different racist worldview. Worldviews have consequences. Every one of you, when you applied to be appointed to this commission, filled out the six-page application, which included a full-page commission members' ethics code prior to signing. I quote, "I realize that mine is a county trust, that I represent all the people," and the paragraph that goes on to say, "Respecting the dignity and worth of the individual, I shall base my relations with people on their qualities as individuals without distinction as to race, or creed, or gender, or color, or economic, or social status. I believe that a person's greatest possession, as well as his or her greatest contribution to society, may lie in the ways in which he or she differs from me, rather than in the ways in which we are similar. I shall accept these differences and try to build a useful relationship upon them." Calling for minorities to stop coming here because we need to fight against the browning of America violates this code of ethics. And I call on Michael Gordon and Larry Morse as leadership of this commission to call for Luana Gillette's resignation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other slips, for people signed up for the call to the public, we'll move on to item number one. Go ahead and approach. Nobody else signed up for it, but we'll take one more.
I apologize. I was told, I went back to sign up, and someone told me I didn't have to for the call to public. Is that incorrect?
It's been typical to sign up for it.
Okay, well, I will remember to do that from... But she specifically said, "Oh, you don't have to do that if you're just doing the call to the public." I apologize. Okay. My name is Sharon Weber, and I live here in Kingman, in the old downtown. And I am here today to speak to the issue. First, I would like to say that I have absolutely no personal dislike, or hatred, or vendetta against anyone on this board or the Supervisors' board. Whether I agree or disagree with anyone, I do not believe in hatred as a way of thinking and a way of living, and that is absolutely not true. Absolutely. My concern about this issue, about Ms. Gillette's comments, first, she has also had also said that she doesn't believe that the things that she has said are racist. And there's a lot, there was a lot of rhetoric. It is clearly in almost every, you know, Southern Poverty law, the ADL, Anti-Defamation League, in all the different watchdog groups' policies, that specific language is considered racist. I have chosen to use the word bias because it seems to be more friendly and less threatening. Okay? Today is 9/11. When 9/11 occurred, President Bush said, "They hate us because they envy our freedom." But they hated us for another reason. They hate, they hated us because of words and language that told them they should hate us. And this is why hate speech is inappropriate. There also is a clear policy in the county, a nondiscrimination policy, just as there is in many workplaces around the country. Police departments, hospitals, schools, I used, I worked for the schools for 25 years. If I would have used that language, I would have been dismissed because I had to serve children who were of diverse backgrounds. My husband was in management all the years I've known him. He's had to dismiss many workers. He's retired now, retired last year. On more than one occasion in the last few years, he had to dismiss workers for using language that was considered biased, or racist, or inappropriate in the workplace. It does happen. And certainly, for county leaders, I would think it would be really, really important that you all realize that you're leaders of the community. People look to you for guidance and leadership. So, I think something, I think the issue should be addressed. And addressed without snarky remarks, without people making fun of how outrageous it is for us to expect our county leadership to be non-biased. And now, I'm just going to read what I did prepare. Okay? Thoughts become words. Words become actions. Actions become habit. And habit becomes character. And character becomes our destiny. Racist thought and action says far more about the person they come from and the group they come from than the person or group they are directed at.
We do have a two-minute limit in your... Could you please sum it up?
So, I'm asking you all to consider some positive response and to assure the public that bias is not going to be applied by anyone in the county to anyone in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Seeing no hands, we'll close the public input and move on to item number one.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 402-33123 to allow for a maximum 160-foot wireless communication tower in a CRE, Commercial Recreation Zone, in the Beaver Dam vicinity in the Arizona Strip. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Is there, we have one person signed up to talk on it, and it's rigid. Luellison?
Hi, that's Bridget Lewison. I was really glad to see that you're looking into approving another cell tower. And as anybody who's driven in the area knows, that the service there is very spotty. And communication's a very important thing. It's, you know, not just for the personal good, it's for the common good. And it's really hard to do business when you can't talk to somebody. And speaking of communication, I, since 1991, have been a professional journalist, public relations and marketing professional. And Ms. Gillette's comments, as somebody who's had to handle a lot of issues in marketing and PR, this county's doing a terrible job with the bad PR that you've been getting over her comments in the national media. And, you know, it started with Sasha Cohen's Showtime special that put Kingman in a really bad spotlight with his fake town hall.
Excuse me. Could you stick to the item? We had the call to the public, but this is for item number one. And we've moved on.
This is about communication, and the cell towers help everyone to communicate. So, I would like to encourage Mojave County to communicate better for the common good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the Commission? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
One second. We have a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Powers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number two.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 402-64111 from an RE, 10-acre minimum-watt size zone, a residential recreation, 10-acre minimum-watt size zone, to a highway commercial zone to bring the parcel into conformance in the Beaver Dam vicinity in the Arizona Strip. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you, Chris. We have one person signed up to sign to discuss it, and that's Robin Farren.
So, Robin Farren wasn't able to be here. I'm just speaking on behalf of her, just briefly. I will not read her statement. I will respect your request to speak to the agenda items. The point of why...
Could you please state your name again and address?
Robin Farren. Yes, Robin Farren of the One Coalition. She wasn't able to be here today, and she asked for me to speak on her behalf. I will respect your request for the agenda items to be focused on the specific agenda items. We came here in peaceful protest, and the point of speaking at each individual agenda item was to make the point that every single agenda item that comes across this commission's table is another opportunity for racism to have influence upon the decisions. That's the whole point of having each one of us speak. But we won't. I will respect your request to focus on the agenda item. But we still are making our peaceful protest of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment for the speaker. Now, we're talking about your comments to this item. I've been on the commission most of 12, 13 years. We have an attorney that sits there normally. And if there's anything that we do and any reaction that we have to any issue, it's called on by him. We're not perfect. I'm not saying I'm perfect. But there is no racism that I have ever seen related to items on this commission during the last, I was off for about two years, but a good part of 12, 13 years. So, I want to make that point very clear on behalf of my experience on this commission.
I appreciate your perspective. I very much do. The last thing I will add is racism is very typically invisibly embedded. It's not overt the way that we think it will be. For example, planning and zoning makes decisions about rezoning and gentrification that affects predominantly low-income people and people of color. So, you may not think that racism affects, or you may not see it, but it absolutely does. And that's the point of what we're trying to make. There should be no place for racism invisibly or otherwise to influence the decisions. And I'm not talking about gentrification here in Kingman, but I am saying that zoning and rezoning can be influenced by your ideas and your worldview about who should be living in certain areas.
I heard what you said, and I don't want to get into an argument, but I want to make clear what I said. I have never seen anything brought before us that, in my opinion, and I believe we've got legal here all the time, to correct us if we do. So, racism is a word that has gotten totally out of control.
Okay. I appreciate that. We're still calling for removal because there should be no racism in any form in county government. Thank you.
Well, again, I think I can speak to that. That's not our responsibility.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Is item two to bring a parcel into compliance?
That's correct. Seeing no other speakers? Seeing no other speakers signed up? Is there discussion by the Commission?
Make a motion to approve according to staff recommendations.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kelly and a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three.
Item number three A is an evaluation for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and the Desert Hills Fire District Area Plan from an HR, High Density Residential Land Use, to a GC, General Commercial Land Use Designation for Assessor's Parcel Number 12005-186 and 189 in the Lake Havasu vicinity. Staff recommends approval of the amendment of both the Mojave County General Plan and the Desert Hills Fire District Area Plan for Assessor's Parcel Numbers 1205-186 and 187 to be changed to a General Commercial Land Use Designation.
Thank you, Chris. I have two people signed up. David Stope? Stope? Yes, David? Do we have a, just a second. Do we have a portable mic that we could use, or... Here we go.
My name is Dave Stopkey. My address is 3223 London Bridge Road in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. The reason I want to speak out against the storage units is I have been living there for 50 years. We moved out here in 1970, and we built the KOA campground, which covered a good part of this, half of this area that we're talking about now. With time, that got sold, or resold, and got vacant, and the last people that just came in leveled the whole area, area next door. Their intention was to put a trailer park there, which was fine. And, but, they ran out of money, from my understanding, and couldn't get the funding for the RV parks, so they decided to go with storage units. I have no problem with storage units. I think they're great moneymakers for people that own them, which I own some myself. My biggest problem here is not against storage unit, it's against where they want to put them. Desert Hills, for those of you that don't live there, is a very small little community outside of Lake Havasu City, about four miles out. It's a very little community. We have one gas station that's not operating now. We have one restaurant, we have one bar, we have two little convening stores. And then, of course, the refuge golf course is directly behind all of this. So, the units are proposed, we go from one entrance to the golf course almost to the other end, except that you would hit my land over there. We have an acre over there on the left end of it. My objection is that to put a unit, that units that big in that location would be, I was thinking about it, kind of like sitting here and saying that the little piece of wall over there is that part of Desert Hills, the other piece over there is that part of Desert Hills, and this part is going to be the storage units. It is a huge project for that little tiny community. We just have, we will have nothing else but a storage unit, community. And we already had one of those go up. I don't remember any meetings protesting that one, but one storage unit went up here about six, seven months ago. Soon as it went up, it was sold to somebody else. So, this will be the second one. This will be huge. So, that is my main request, is that it will not be approved because of what it will do to the community. We will just be one huge storage area, Desert Hills. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have Cindy Irving. I don't see Cindy, so we'll move for, to... Discussion. What do you got, discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I failed to mention to the Commission that we have received three letters in opposition to this request, as well as one letter in support. Those should be in your folders.
Yes, they are. I have some concerns with this, this proposal, in that my former company and current company has had quite a bit to do with the development of the refuge. And drainage was my biggest, well, two things. Drainage and how the wastewater is going to be handled. Drainage, I know we had to significantly modify plans for the refuge to allow for the, basically, half of it through the lower golf course to be open to, as a flood zone and not encroach into it. And I believe that, and I may be mistaken, but I believe a portion of this is blocking part of that floodplain that goes through there. And it would be at least very strongly encouraged that that be looked at during the development phase of this, this project, if it goes that far. The other one is wastewater, and the only wastewater available, other than septic for this thing, because I understand there's supposed to be a restroom in each of the units, would be that the refuge lift station, which is now owned by the city of Lake Havasu, was designed and developed for the refuge and not for subsequent parties among, you know, other properties around there. So, that would have to be evaluated to see if it has adequate capacity if they intend to use that. That's all I have. Has anybody else got anything?
Sir?
Sir?
May I make a statement concerning the water issue? Drainage?
Yeah, I...
I live on the, on the head of that, where they proposed to put those storage units, and all the water from beyond, almost a mile away, comes directly down the hill towards our place. It comes into that area, and all of the water coming from all of Desert Hills eventually comes to my house. There's a hole in the wall where water could go through, and we had to fight to get that put in. But right now, we have a four-foot burb, so when the water comes down, it doesn't flood out my property for the third time. So it is a problem with the water coming down that way.
That's what I was alluding to.
My house is the outlet.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I ask?
Certainly.
If this was put in, would this stop the water from coming to your house?
No, it would not.
It's downstream of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There, there's a, there's a letter that was stating about view, where that if it was to be approved, it would block your view. There's nothing that can be done about blocking the view.
No, not in, not in the county. We haven't, we don't have any view restrictions. Thank you. No other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second, or a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Alexander. And may I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Do you want a roll call vote?
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye. Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Jax?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Meele?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 3B.
Item 3B is a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Numbers, or Assessor Parcel Number 12005-186 from a CRE Commercial Recreation Zone to a C2 Zone to allow for indoor boat and RV storage in the Lake Havasu vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions. Staff rece, or the department received three letters in opposition and one letter in support.
Thank you. I do have David, again, that would like to speak on 3B. Just, just a second. Go ahead and wait for the mic. Okay.
Excuse me.
Oh.
I'm sorry, this is the same issue?
Yes.
And I'm speaking to the same thing I objected to. Just restate it again?
Okay.
My objection for the storage units is that we are a very small community. It's not like just putting a storage unit where you just have regular landscape, regular community. It's just a very small community with one little road. And we have one bar. We have one restaurant. We have two little convening stores. And basically, that is about it. The next, the other part is this humongous area that we started, that we built a KOA campground there many, many years ago, 1970. And after we had option to buy on another area even bigger than that, well, the people that are there now have bought that other area, and now it's one huge development. So my objection is just, we, really, it's like there will be nothing else there but storage units, because they're so big, they take so much space, and they go from one end of the community to the other. And I just can't see living without myself.
Thank you. Discussion by the commission?
I have a question for staff. I know very little bit about, very little about this project, but the item you brought up about water flooding, has flood control recommended approval on this?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Abbott, and members of the commission. Flood Control has seen this proposal as far as the plan amendment and the general, or the plan amendment and the rezone are concerned. We do, you know, if there was any concern from them, then they would have stated so. You'd prob, you would have had something in the body of the staff rec that expressed their concern. Now, this project also has to submit a site plan prior to construction, and Flood Control will be able to review the site plan at that point in time. There is a difference between drainage concerns and flooding concerns. And if there was flooding concerns, they would have brought it up in this application. So they may still have drainage concerns that they would bring forward during the site plan process, and those can actually be, control of their drainage issues can be done with, you know, at the time, the engineer takes a look at the, at the drainage, et cetera. So that would be done during the site plan process.
So during the site plan, they can come up with a method for drainage?
Mr. Abbott, that is correct.
Thank you.
Well, and I think one thing that needs to be considered is the staff did note that it was in an AE flood zone, and that, and that they will have to take into account flood protection and drainage issues, not just, not just the flood protection. Um, any other discussion? I had an additional concern I should have brought up at the first, first comment period on 3A, but that is that there, you know, with, with the proposal to put a restroom facility in each of the, each of the units, it brings to, to mind concern that there may be overnight stays in these units. And personally, I don't think that should be acceptable in, in storage units to, in other words, for having to buy a place just to come, use your RV and, and stay in your storage unit, which I have seen in this county already. Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did state that the standard conditions would apply. I, that, there is one error in there. One of the conditions to approval is that habitation of a proposed storage units is prohibited.
Would that be overnight habitation?
That would be any habitation, overnight or of a more lengthy stay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if the commission would like to clarify that, to state that habitation of the storage units is prohibited, including overnight stays, that's certainly something you can add to that condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The storage unit, I was under the impression it's going to be a big building enclosed, but, but not separate stalls or the units. Was I mistaken on that, or they have the same up in, up in that Mojave Valley? They have a couple of them.
My understanding is it'll be a common set of buildings, but there are going to be individual framed-out units within that building. At least that's what the preliminary plan that we've seen kind of indicates. So they'll have a large garage door for every unit?
Yeah, yeah.
To access it. Any further discussion? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Pardon me? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
May I have a roll count again?
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Gillette?
No.
Commissioner Jax?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Meele?
No.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-145, setting forth a special use permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 20804043 to allow for a towing and storage impound yard in an A General Zone in the Yucca vicinity. Staff recommends approval of the extension of time to be in effect until October 7th, 2020, with all of the conditions of BOS Resolution Number 2017-145 remaining in place.
Thank you. I do have anybody to sign up to speak on it? Is the applicant available? Would you like to state anything?
I just, real quick, just... I'm George, George Masters from A&amp;G Towing. I'm one of the co-owners. And basically, it's just that we ran out of funds at the time when this was going through and our financing. Now, we're in better shape to proceed with this, and I just wanted to let you know why we didn't do it the first time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by the commission? Seeing none? I'm looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry.
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay.
A motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jax and a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number five.
Mr. Chairman, item number five is evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 317-57014 and 016 from a C2H 36A Highway Commercial 36-Acre Minimum Lot Size Zone to a C2H or Highway Commercial Zone to bring the property into compliance. This is in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Have, have nobody signed up to speak to this? Is the applicant available? Seeing none? Discussion by the commission? No discussion? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve according to staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by, excuse me, pardon me, Commissioner Alexander and a second by Commissioner Gillette. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number six.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 317-57014 to allow for a billboard in a highway commercial zone in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Nobody signed up for this one? Is the applicant available? No? Discussion by commission? Seeing none? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 317-57021 to allow for a billboard in a general commercial highway, excuse me, a highway commercial zone in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Again, nobody signed up? Is the applicant available? No? Thank you. Discussion by commission? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Jax. And may I have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Item number eight is a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 331-38016 from an AR 36A or Agricultural Residential 36-Acre Minimum Lot Size Zone to an AR 10A or Agriculture Residential 10-Acre Minimum Lot Size Zone and an AR 5 or Agriculture Residential 5-Acre Minimum Lot Size Zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Again, nobody signed up for it? Is the applicant available? Would she like to address the commission? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on, I like the application site plan.
Thank you. We got one. That we have an application, we have a site plan with the application on this one. Discussion by the commission? Seeing none? May I have a motion?
Via staff recommendation.
A second motion?
We have a motion by Commissioner Jax and a second by Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. See, we have any monthly reports? Any monthly reports? Yeah, that's where it's going.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is kind of a holdover from a time when the department used to manually keep a whole series of reports for the commission. Staff has left it on there because we still do keep some of that information. Not this month, but next month, we will start including a series of graphs and information on basically the number of permits the department takes in, what our revenue looks like as, or what our, what revenue from building permits look like, as well as how many rezones and use permits the department's been getting in. So in your next packages, expect that information to be brought forward. It's basically the same information we used to provide for those who were in the commission ten years ago. It's just, instead of being a tabled, you know, set of tabled data, it will be in graphs.
Thank you. I know we discussed this several months ago, and you said it was coming. I just was hoping it would be here.
And in October, it will be here, and we'll provide information for the commission all the way back to January of this year.
Thank you. Any commission? Any commissioner comments?
I would like, please. I would just like to say that I apologize to the planning and zoning members for the disruption that has been caused by these people coming to every meeting. This is going on all over the United States right now. It's coming from the socialist liberal people. And I am a conservative. I am an American. I am a Christian. And I will not apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman? I would like to hear from the county attorney on procedures for removing a commissioner. For example, if I was to get a DUI, would the county attorney remove me from the commission? Would the supervisor remove me from the commission? Is there any procedure? I don't know of any so far. I haven't seen or heard of any procedure for anything like this. But I would like to hear from the county attorney on what the county's rules are.
Be a good suggestion. Can we?
Can we put that on the agenda?
Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Powers and remainder of the commission. I will request that Mr. Taylor be available to speak to you in October about the removal of a commission member. If you, if the commission so desires, we will add it to the end of the, the agenda or the beginning, if you like.
Well, I think that would clear it up because, you know, personally, we don't have any ability, this, anybody on this deal is to remove anybody up here.
That is correct.
We're all individually selected by our supervisor to serve at the pleasure of, of the supervisors, to my knowledge.
That is correct. The removal of a commissioner is a board action. Well, unless the commissioner voluntarily resigns, but assuming that that does not take place, then the removal of a commissioner is, is a board action. The board can only take it for cause. My understanding is for cause is poorly defined, but, you know, I have the feeling and I'm hoping the attorney will clarify this. You know, you know it when you see it, kind of a, of a test. But definitely the, the commission does not have, the individual commission members do not have the ability to remove one of their own members absent the, well, at, at all and definitely absent an action by the board. But we will, we will follow through as requested.
Thank you.
Appreciate your handling of that matter.
Anybody else? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion?
Everybody. A motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Abbott? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're out of here.